Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, thank you for coming this evening. Could you please stand and we'll say the pledge of allegiance?
Due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor, Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Protem Campana?
Here.
And Mayor Coin?
Here.
Are there any agenda changes that wish to be made? Commissioner Ken Benzey?
I just would like to add some comments to the last minutes.
Please, do you want to do that now? Or? Which, what do you wish to do?
I can read my five points quick or I can submit them.
Well, why don't you, when we get to the consent agenda, you could add it at that time?
Okay.
We'll be talking about the minutes there, okay? Anything, any other agenda items that wish to be added? Commissioner Reynolds?
I would like to add to the agenda to request that the city attorney review the documentation that was FOIA'd by Michael Niger.
Is there a support to that? Support? Support? Mayor Protem Campana, support? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Pose, no? Okay, that'll be item number 15. Announcements? I lost my announcements. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve adopting the agenda as amended? Commissioner Campana?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Commissioner, any discussion? None? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Okay, announcements? There's my announcements. Basic announcements I have are openings on boards and commissions. I'd have to say we've been very fortunate, as you'll see on the agenda, that we've had a lot of people step forward. We are awaiting the committee reviewing attempts to improve our efforts to get citizens to serve on the commissions and committees. And particularly, we have two openings on the aging services, two, excuse me, four on aging services, two on arts and culture, one in the Board of Review, one in the DDA, three in the Harbor Advisory Commission. More importantly, two full openings and one alternate opening on the Marquette area wastewater treatment advisory board, one on the Housing Commission, two on the Rec. and Parks Board, four openings on the Planning Commission, which is not so good, and four on the Parking and Advisory Committee. We'd be very honored if folks would step up and willingly join those because we do need their input and help. Moving on for the presentations, we have a celebration of the harbor photograph by Paul Nelson. Paul, are you here? Paul, could you come up to, right, right there perhaps? Appreciate you being here.
You're welcome. Good evening, Your Honor Commissioners. I'm a local photographer and live just south of Marquette. And my friend of mine, and I were up on top of Mount Marquette photographing fireworks last year. And I know there's a lot of disappointment because of the way it worked out, but I found as a photographer, it actually gave me benefit because the separations allowed me to get pictures that I wouldn't have gotten otherwise. And this one in particular came out very well, and I thought it showed the whole harbor as well. It lit the whole thing up, more than just the fireworks, kind of showed the idea of the whole celebration. I had it in the City Hall here as part of the Superior Photoland Exhibition, and I heard that the city staff were interested in it, so I just offered it to the city for display here at the city council, hoping it might encourage someone to help a little bit more with the fireworks next year, looking forward to a better show, and I know, anyway, so.
Thank you. I have a question, Paul. Are you giving that to the city?
Yes.
Okay. It is on the consent agenda because we have to formally accept it.
Yes.
You can wait around.
I am offering it to you, if you wish to accept it.
Well, we probably will accept it.
Yes.
But I can't say we will.
I understand.
Because we have to vote on it.
Yes.
So greatly appreciated, it's a beautiful picture.
Thank you.
And we'll display it proudly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If you want to stick around for the consent agenda, just to keep you on edge. All right, thank you. The next present, the next item is the United Way of Marquette County lease request by Board Member Richard Graybill.
I've been asked by the Board of Directors of the United Way to address the City Commission tonight. With me is Dennis, who is our chairman. Most of the points that I want to make are addressed in our letter to the commission. The United Way has been an occupant of office space in the former donor's room at the arena. And we were there for 10 years without paying any rent, we were paying the utilities. The arrangement was so that we could supposedly recoup the investment we made to build that place out for our offices. And then the City Commission determined that we should begin paying rent, and we have been paying rent for the last three years. And then this year, we get notice that the rent was going to increase from $8 to $10 a square foot, which just puts it totally out of our reach. So we've gone out, we have found free office space to occupy in the medical center, but we thought we would give the commission one more opportunity. We hate to leave the arena, we think that the location of the United Way at the arena is beneficial to the arena, to the city. The United Way is a different agency from most of the agencies that occupy space at the arena because we're really a pass-through agency. We pass through the money that we collect to the other agencies in the community that provide services. And in, in the services provided to the population of the city of Marquette, we have documented that it's almost 3,000 of the citizens of the city of Marquette that receive benefits from member agencies of the United Way. We're a pass-through. We collect the money, we fund these agencies, we fund programs of these agencies for them. The effect of having to pay the rent to the city has been to deny several hundred people the services of the United Way because the money is just not there. Instead of going for services, it goes to the city of Marquette for rent. So we would, we would request that the City Commission consider reducing our rent. We certainly would carry our own weight and pay the utilities and that cost at the arena, but we would like to, we would be willing to stay if we could go back to the old lease period or the lease term of a dollar a year. It is to the benefit of this community that the United Way is there. We hate to leave it. We have a $90,000 investment in the build-out and the equipment and fixtures that we have put into that place, and we are a little reluctant to walk away from it, but we just cannot do it at the rate that the city has determined. Are there any questions?
That's, you have to address the questions and conversations through me, Mr. Graybill.
All right.
Would you state your name and address and place, city of residence also?
Richard Graybill, I'm an attorney in the city of Ishpamik.
Mr. West, did you wish to speak also?
I'm Dennis. No, I'm Dennis Smith.
Dennis Smith, excuse me, wrong Dennis, right. Okay, Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Is something we approved for the rental rates in our, it is the increase?
I believe so, at the budget session, is that not correct?
It is.
Thank you. Let me ask Director Zugger maybe to walk us through some of the discussion around the rates.
Certainly, just to answer your question, Commissioner, yes, $10 a square foot is what the commission approved at the, in the fee schedule for the current fiscal year. Just a couple of points, and I appreciate the United Way and can say that they've been a valued tenant and hopefully will continue to be a valued tenant in the Lakeview Arena. I think as was brought out, you know, this is really the third contract they're looking to establish at Lakeview Arena. The first one was in 2001, and it was a 10-year contract. And at that point, it was a dollar a year plus utilities. And they're absolutely correct in saying it was for, it was considered a lease hold improvement credit, and the city had done several like that at that time with both nonprofit and for-profit in, in the arena. The second contract was fall of 2011, and I think there was quite a bit of debate on the commission at that time. And there were two things that were somewhat interesting and that, that came out in the minutes of that meeting, went back and reviewed them, and that state law, city donations to specific causes must serve a public purpose. That was one piece that was brought out. And then the second was city charter, and it requires all lease, leases shall be for a fair consideration as determined by the City Commission. And I think the city attorney at that time said, you know, that it could be a dollar if that's what the commission determines is fair compensation, it's what the commission determines. But at the end of that debate, it was determined that the $8 a square foot was fair consideration. And so that led to a three-year contract. That contract was expired this fall, and we've been going on a month-to-month until we could sort of get this worked out, and that's sort of where we're at today.
Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Can I just ask, how much would we stand to lose should they, they leave their current space?
That is $11,052.
And that's per year?
Correct.
I guess my comment would be, you know, we're at a spot where it's something better than nothing, and I guess I just want to pose that question to the commission. We did come up with our fees, we set the increases, but I guess I would like to throw that question out there maybe as, would we be better off negotiating versus just saying no?
Who are you throwing the question out to? The manager?
I guess I'd like to see how my fellow Commissioners feel about it only because I, you know, I think if we direct anything differently, it needs to come from, from us.
Commissioner Campana?
If I could ask a question of Carl, how many square feet are we talking about? Do you know? I mean, I could divide, I see.
Yeah.
Second question.
$1,500 square feet.
$1,500 times eight. Forty-eight, four is twelve. That's about right. Next question for you, Carl, is there any agencies or anybody lined up that would want to reserve this, should they become vacant?
We haven't pursued it, and obviously, and we haven't, well, we've had one ask for vacancy.
Do you have a feeling for this? Is it like a hot item, hot place to rent or not, or is it a dead spot?
Well, I think we're, I think we're very marketable. I think we have a, you know, we're, our rates are reasonable. Our location is good. And we did a market study about three years ago, I think, when we went through this process the last time, and we found that we were, you know, pretty attractive in terms of the rates in the city.
To answer Commissioner Ken Benzey's question, truthfully too, I would like to see something rather than nothing, but it was determined it should be $10 a square foot, and, you know, we'd have to go back and address that. Here we are back in office something again. So I guess we need to talk about this. I would feel we need to talk about it further before we make a decision. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Baldini?
Did you say you were offered free space at the medical center?
Yes, we would be paying no rent, we would be paying a portion of the utilities, it's done on the basis of square foot.
Okay, so I suppose that leads to, that's a very nice professional building.
Yes.
And what's the problem with that space?
That we have to move. It's, it's an effort, it's a disruption to business to have to move.
Commissioner Conley?
Does the Community Foundation share in office space with United Way? And if so, or if they have a nearby space, what do they pay?
Who are you asking that?
Through you to the city manager, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The Marquette County Community Foundation subleases space from the United Way. They've been doing so since 2005. And it's my understanding it's approximately 50% of the, of the lease annually. So does that answer your question? Was there a second part to that question?
A second question then, is the square footage, we're talking about a shared square footage, or is that a dedicated square footage?
Um.
Dedicated to the United Way and then an equal amount dedicated to the Community?
I think they, I think they have, well, they have one private office, and the vast majority of the common space in the main office area is, is used by the Community Foundation. And then they share the, the conference room in the back of the office.
The Community Foundation has given us notice.
Excuse me. Address the chair before you address anybody. What are you going to say?
The Community Foundation has given us notice that they are moving in March.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Frazier?
I'd like to agree with Sarah, and I was on the commission at the time during the budget meetings, obviously, but, you know, something might be better than nothing, obviously. And I think United Way does a great job, and they do a great job with the community. And I know they have some other people that use their space for other things, so, you know, maybe we could consider it, but up to the commissions, obviously.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I have a couple of comments. I was doing some numbers. I wasn't aware that the Community Foundation was going to move, and then your costs are going to go up considerably unless you can get another roommate, basically. I was thinking if, if the rent was raised $2 a square foot, you would only be paying $4,000 more a year, but if the Community Foundation leave, you're up to $10,000 a year more of your expenses. I have some, just a couple of comments. You folks weren't present at the prolonged budget sessions that we had this summer. Three of the Commissioners are new, and they were not part of that. One of the issues at that time, we have, because of tax tribunal issues, we have a $2 million deficit, which we have to accommodate by cutting the budget and doing things that we don't want to do. And I'm not sure if you're aware of that. But that's a factor. This, the city is a business, just like you're a business. And we are a pass-through agency, basically, in that we collect taxes and pass it through in terms of services to our residents. And at the budget hearing, we, and this is to refresh my memory as well as to update the Commissioners who were not part of the budget session, is the Lakeview Arena is running a deficit of around $400,000 a year, okay? And that's because primarily 43% of the people who use it are from the townships and do not pay anything to support it. We have been putting progressively the screws to poor Carl to say we want this to pay for itself and to not continue to have a $4,000 basically handout supporting the Lakeview Arena. Not that it's not worth it, it's a great facility, but that's the problem you're, we are facing as a commission. And we got very hard-nosed finally, because every year, the people at the budget would come and this group would say, well, we can't afford that, and we can't afford this, and we'd always cave. But last year, we raised the rates on virtually everybody who is using that facility substantially, and that's the reality. And then the problem I have is combined, compounded, you have a $10,000 deficit that you're going to be facing, we have a $400,000 deficit, and we would be very inconsistent if we said to the ICE Junior Hockey, too bad, we're raising your rates a substantial amount, but we're going to give the United Way something for free. That's the problem, and I think you're standing there, businessmen, you would have a problem doing that in business. Similarly, we could say to the Board of Light and Power, they pay over $1 million in pilt. We'd say, well, you know, we just, we'll charge you a dollar or nothing. That's just not responsible government. So I think, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to my fellow Commissioners, in taking action on this, they have to consider those things and consider consistency in an approach to trying to get the Lakeview Arena at least less of a substantial drain on the budget, which it is, that's a huge budget drain. So I'd like you all to think about that, and does anybody else have any comments? Commissioner Campana?
Did you say you want to go from paying $8 a square foot to $0 a square foot?
We'd like to go back to the original arrangement, yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else? Well, seeing nothing, I would hope that you would understand where we're at, and the Commissioners will begin to think about what this effect has on the budget as well as consistency. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Okay. The next is a Planning Commission presentation by Chair Steve Laurie.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Commissioners, Planning Commission has completed another year, and as you mentioned earlier, we could use some more help on there. We are down to five members currently on a nine-member commission, and certainly encourage more recruiting for that board. Planning Commission was originally established in Marquette in 1947 under State Act, and has been preparing citywide plans on a basis ever since. The responsibilities that are assigned to the Planning Commission are development and update of a city master plan, that's been ongoing for the last three years, and we've just about got it completed, review of development proposals, subdivisions, capital improvements, street and utility projects, making recommendations on zoning matters, and the annual capital improvement plan to the City Commission. Planning Commission also has review authority over the six-year capital outlay budget through provision of Michigan Public Act 33 of 2008 and the city charter. This table gives the makeup of the current Planning Commission, including one that I believe you're appointing tonight, so it shows on here as pending. But it is, it is a nine-member board, so we need additional. It has been mentioned that, I guess, the provisions of the ethics ordinance that was passed a little over a year ago that, I guess, tried to avoid any image of conflict of interest has really limited the pool that we have to draw from because traditionally, those involved in development within the city had more of an interest and participated, they're no longer really eligible to fully participate on this board. Major accomplishments during 2014, we have just recently completed a major update of the municipal property inventory map, with staff creating a booklet for the map and data for all city-owned property parcels, including parcels that are located outside the city boundaries. We've incorporated that into the zoning, the future zoning for the master plan as well. We've continued the update of the community master plan. The document will be completed next month and then shared with the City Commission prior to circulation to the public. There's a mandated 63-day review period in state law where it goes out to certain public agencies for study and comment, and we're hoping to have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission before that happens. We've participated in a review of the Third Street Corridor Sustainable Development Plan and the Adapting to Climate Change and Variability Study, both of which are included as appendices to the community master plan, and the Berg Avenue Place Plan as well. We've reviewed the 2013-2014 Capital Improvement Plan, we made a few recommendations on that, and we forwarded to the commission several strategies for your updated strategic plan. Again, this is just showing the new cover of the master plan as proposed, and that is awaiting a joint meeting. Our other more or less regular business items during the year, we reviewed five capital street reconstruction projects, dealt with five conditional use permit requests, four site plan reviews, two rezoning requests, one amendment of the zoning ordinance, and one amendment of the master plan, also one street minor reconstruction recommendation. Somewhat a bit unusual, we did not have any planned unit development reviews or amendments this year, and that is a good thing. We, we found in the past that we were getting basically a major expense for developers to bring in minor little changes to planned unit development, and we proposed for you an ordinance change with that, I think it was just over a year ago, and that allowed for more administrative review and less formal hearings on that, and that seems to be working. During the year, we held 21 regular meetings plus four additional work sessions, a total of 40, almost 42 hours of meetings and averaging two hours apiece. There were three unexcused absences and 27 excused absences during the meeting. We had two regular meetings that were canceled due to lack of business, but one was canceled due to lack of a quorum, and that's why I feel we need the additional manpower on there. Goals for this year, presentation of the updated community master plan to the community this winter, and this is a project that began in mid-2012 and is just about complete. We also providing advisory service for the We also providing advisory service for the drafting of a new land development code. The land development code will supersede the zoning ordinance and two adopted form-based codes, and will include other relevant land use ordinance provisions as well for the fence ordinance, sign ordinance. Concerns that the group felt they wanted to forward to the Commission for 2015, the number of Planning Commissioners has been low, generally five to six throughout much of the year. We've, there is always a difficulty getting a quorum, and, as I said, at one point, we had to cancel a meeting because of that. The Planning Commission would also like to recommend amendments to the municipal property sale ordinance and the property licensing process that would ensure consistency with the Community Master Plan. Process for two public projects in 2014 seemed to damage confidence in the transparency of community planning efforts, calling for early coordination and outreach for significant municipal projects. We did get some negative feedback through the public hearing process on the two rezonings that we did for public projects, simply because the public felt that agreements were already in place for the use of that property before the rezoning was requested and dealt with at the Planning Commission level. With that, I will just ask if you have any other questions regarding this presentation.
Steve, thank you very much for your presentation. And are there comments or questions, Commissioner Kamenzey?
See, if you could go back to that last page, maybe, just the concerns, the amendments to the property sales, can I ask you more in detail what, what you're looking for with that?
Well, I guess, right, prior to, to some recent amendments to the property sales ordinance, the Planning Commission did have a role in recommending sales or not to the Commission. Those, that ordinance is rewritten, or the policy's rewritten, so that items no longer come before the Planning Commission for that. And I guess we're just recommending that the ma, excuse me, the master plan be consulted, whether the Planning Commission or not is. We'd certainly like to see the, the master plan consulted for any changes to public property in particular.
I guess I, I would just like to concur that I, I do think any time that we go to sell land, you know, certainly coming from the Planning Commission, I think there are things that you think about much differently than you do when you sit up here. So that is something I would certainly be open to, to looking back at. And I think we have a, a joint session coming up, a work session with you, and, and I guess I'd like to have that as one of the discussion points. And just for the record, the last two properties that were rezoned, one was Founder's Landing, what was the other property?
It was property on South McLoughlin Avenue.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess I would just like to say, this is, to me, by far, one of the most important, you know, bodies that we work with up here, and it concerns me greatly, I guess, that we have four vacancies right now. I mean, this body, you know, the City Commission relies on their information, hard work, so much in what we do, and, I mean, any, anything I can do to help, any, any of our commissioners up here, I think, would be willing to kind of go out and shake the trees. But like you said, the hardest part is a lot of the people that would be best for this are the developers that come before you, that typically have to step down. But I guess, to our community members out there, if you have any of these expertise related to planning, please consider stepping up. I'd like to thank you, and I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have a comment, Steve. I'm going to put you on the spot here for a minute, take your time answering this. I agree with Commissioner Kamenzey, Kamenzey, to the extent that it's probably the most important committee we have, and it's also one of the most complex that you have to deal with. And, and, two questions. What do you, what do you think the people listening to this or thinking about becoming a member of the Planning Commission, what do you think they should bring to, as a, as a citizen? What, what trait are you looking for in a volunteer?
Well, the Planning Commission by law is supposed to represent a variety of interests and backgrounds, and so we don't need all developers or engineers on, on there. We, we really need people that just have a really definite interest in how the community develops and what their, the future Marquette would look like.
Okay. Now, see, Mike here is a citizen sitting at home watching, and he says, "This is very interesting, but I really don't know enough about it." Once you become a Planning Commissioner, how do you get educated as to how to do this?
Well, Michigan State University or the Planning Association does offer some classes on, on actual zoning law and procedures. But basically, the, the master plan that we're about to adopt in, in the next few months is the guidebook for what has been considered. And once that's adopted, that's, that's supposed to be the guide for the next five to 10 years at least of future development within the city. And it's just becoming familiar with that document and applying it to the decisions that come before that commission. But there's also, I think, plenty of opportunity to provide input in other plans that come along, the street projects that we review, private development, I guess, if you have recommendations on how they can make that a better fit for the neighborhood or for the community as a whole, there's opportunity to, to present that input.
What, the final question is, at the last budget session, we discussed paying the Planning Commission, and the present chair at that time was adamantly against that. But frankly, you guys put an awful lot of time into this. Would you, at the work session, maybe be prepared to have your members talk about that and how they feel?
Sure. There has been some very mixed opinion over the years on that while I've been on there. We have gotten feedback from several that have resigned stating that pay may have been a difference, but I think the people that are there right now are not really interested in the pay. I guess if it was offered, maybe it would attract some more in, and those who, who want to do it without that could donate it back to the city, so.
Would you admit it is a lot of work?
It is.
Okay.
It takes a lot of time outside the meeting as well.
Other questions? Commissioner Frazier.
You guys have some maybe feedback for us, or maybe our work session, about how to handle future rezoning, kind of like the Founder's Landing and stuff like that, stuff you hear from the public about maybe a way, different way for us to handle these big rezoning stuff, or?
I think the, the relocation of the municipal service center is providing an excellent opportunity to do things different, and has, has already started that process with the town meeting that was held the other night, trying to get the word out as to possible locations and, and make sure the public is aware of, of the reasoning for zeroing in on a final location.
Any other comments? If none, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
For a good presentation, and pass our thanks to your committee, too. Okay. The next item are boards and committees, and it gives me great pleasure to ask Bill Hetrick to come up to the dais there, please. Bill, I said it gives me great pleasure to bring you up here, but it gives me great sadness to see that you're leaving the DDA. You've been a real, real strong leader in that, and we're going to miss you, and we're going to give you a little button and a T-shirt. But that doesn't in any way express our real deep gratitude for all the service you've done. You've just done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And would you like to say something?
I would.
Okay.
I would.
All right. Go right ahead. All right.
I'm, I'll wear, I will wear this proudly, and the T-shirt that I have is getting worn out, so I'm glad to have this T-shirt, and I'll wear that proudly. And I would like, I would like to address the Commissioners and the staff. For decades, the Marquette City Commission has welcomed members of the community as they commit to be a part of the committees of their choosing, their passions. Once the terms are up, the City Commission publicly recognizes and provides appropriate thanks to citizens who have fulfilled their volunteer endeavors. Hundreds of people have stood where I am, however, very few have committed to place their names on a ballot in hopes of being voted onto the City Commission. It is the epitome of service above self. Countless hours at some of the most inconvenient times of the day and of the week are required of Commissioners. To serve 20 years on the Downtown Development Authority and eight years on the Parking and Traffic Committee have been a pleasure and a small percentage of the time Commissioners put in. Thank you for your incredible commitment to our community. The Commission and all committees are dependent on the staff for the city of Marquette to the level that is quite evident the extent that we've received statewide and national recognition as a community. My remarks basically are going to expand on, on the key areas of development, expansion, economy, synergy, events, and future. As I read the summary of the top stories of 2014, I was warmly reminded about the details of the development in the greater Marquette area. To negotiate with Duke Life Point, protecting the interests of the city, to educate all parties on the advantage of teaming with the state of Michigan with the Brownfield redevelopment, of which we have a few in the downtown development area, and keep the owners of the for-profit health system fully engaged is a tribute to all involved. The number of tents hours had to be in the hundreds. Thank you to all who have been involved in this endeavor. Duplicate the hours for the trucking route negotiated and the continued efforts to find other solutions. We will have our anchor in downtown Marquette, in the U.P. Health System Marquette Complex, while substantial heavy truck traffic, crucial to our economic stability in our area, travels on a negotiated mutually agreed route. Many of the other top stories centered on the necessity of many varied municipalities to coordinate the efforts to allow development. This is a difficult task to protect the interest of the constituents while working toward a common good goal. Under the leadership of Mona Lang and her staff, the DDA district was expanded to include Third Street to Northern Michigan University, increasing the DDA by approximately one-third. The additional property has allowed the DDA to embrace an essential business district in, as becoming a vital addition. The amount of time to coordinate efforts, whether it is the DDA staff, a committee, the city staff, the Commission, Convention and Visitors Bureau of Marquette County, the townships, on a scale of one to 10, it has consistently been a 10. So certainly, thank you to the staff and to the Commission for that. The number of events, the quality, the creativity, consistency, follow-through in evaluating has been a major challenge undertaken by the DDA. Marquette has enjoyed national notoriety in this generation, which I believe is unprecedented. To be cited as one of the best retirement communities in the United States, to be highlighted and touted as one of Michigan's most prominent economically attractive cities is a feat. My final point, Mike, is the future. It is an indication of careful planning of the present, evaluating the past, and having the earned confidence that the future will be full of positive results, drawing an emotional rave from all. In summation, as we walk, talk, and are transported throughout our domain, I say to all, my family and my wife, who has joined me tonight, have enjoyed the experiences Marquette has provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill. Bill, thank you very much for those remarks. And, you know, this is a certificate of appreciation for your efforts in the DDA, but frankly, I think all of us want to just pass on how much we appreciate you as a human being, and how hard you work for this community, and what qualities you have.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Elizabeth Drum, are you here? Elizabeth, did you bring a prepared speech of four or five minutes, too?
I do not have a prepared speech at all.
Elizabeth, thank you very much for being willing to serve on the Parks and Rec Committee.
Yeah.
We're going to give you a button here.
Oh, thank you.
And that's also a very, very hard-working committee that really has a love for the island, and it's just a great committee. So thank you, I think you'll enjoy it, and we really appreciate your willing to do that. And when you retire, you can bring a speech like Bill.
I, I sure will.
And say nice things about us, okay?
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number Six, appointments of Christopher Kovalev to the Planning Commission for a term ending 2015-18, Patrick Myron to the Peter White Public Library Board of Trustees for a term ending on May 1, 1907, excuse me, 2017, and Evan Bonzel, Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee, ex-official member, for a term ending in 6/115. Is there a motion to make those appointments? So, excuse me, Mr. Baldini, Commissioner Conley, second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have one, just comment on Evan Bonzel. Evan is a senior at Marquette High School, going to Harvard next year, has participated in city government, shadowing the City Commission, and welcome him, and would encourage other of his classmates and underclassmen to join. We would love to have people in high school get involved in city government, and particularly with issues like this. Okay? Any other comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next is Item Number Seven, the city recommendation for appointment to county board, Susan Tolson as the principal representative or key, Kenneth Martin, alternative, Marquette County Transit Authority for a term ending on 12/31/17. Is there a motion to that effect? Commissioner Campana.
Make a motion, we appoint Susan Tolson as the principal and Kenneth Martin as the alternate to the Marquette County Transit Authority for the terms so stated.
Thank you. Is there a support? Commissioner Frazier? Any discussion?
None.
And I, I have a discussion item just for a moment. Mr. Martin, on his application, said that he was interested in participating in county government. Just remind him, he's a city representative to the county, so he is representing the city. Just make that point for him when he serves. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. No? Okay. The next item is the reappointment of Kelly Holmstrom to the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending on February 1, 2018, Terry Shipansky to the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending February 1, 2018, Christopher Bowes to the Parks and Recreation Board for a term of ending January 29, 2018, and Jesse Jones to the Board, Boarding, Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending February 15, 2018. Is there a motion to that? Commissioner?
I move that the City Commission make the following reappointment.
I move that the city commission make the following reappointments. Kelly Holmstrom to the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Terry Shipansky to the same board, Christopher Bowes to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and Jess Jones to the Port of Zoning Appeals.
Is there support? Commissioner Campana? Any discussion? Okay. Seeing that, all those in favor of that motion described by Commissioner Conley, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? No? Okay. Next, thank you for that business. Next, we have public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name, address, and city or township of residence. And if you wish to reserve time or be available for questions on agenda items, please come up and just tell us that and we will call on you at that time. It'd probably be better, or if you wish to speak on that agenda item at that time. So, public comment is open?
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Ed Rissack. I live at 317 East Prospect Street, Marquette, Michigan. I'd like to reserve time for Item 10, Lake Shore Closure.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Bryce Burge. I live at 220 West Ridge in Marquette. I really didn't have anything planned, but I was kind of concerned about the people from United Way coming and speaking. I don't mean this to sound disrespectful to some of the members on the board or positive to the others, but I do like the idea of having something instead of nothing. One of the reasons why I feel that Lakeview is attractive as a location is because there are opportunities for both profit and non-for-profit organizations to be able to survive and thrive in that building. Because it's definitely not from other aspects. There's a lot of empty space in that building in terms of advertising opportunities. There's no reliable internet that I've had, and I've covered sporting events in five states. This is the only arena of its size that I've ever seen without reliable internet. Also, I know the concession stand is outsourced, but they don't take credit cards. That's also something that is not typically done. If an ATM was there, that would do a lot, but as far as I know, the only place in town that doesn't have an ATM or accept credit cards besides Lakeview Arena is Pat's Bar. So it is kind of a different aspect. I think that there's plenty of room in terms of nickel and diming with small improvements in terms of how gameplay and media and how people can come into Lakeview that will help make it more sustainable over time. But one thing that definitely makes it more appealing in terms of big-ticket items is the ability to have that non-for-profit in there. I would at least think about maybe doing a shorter lease with half of it since their roommate, as it was put earlier, is leaving. If maybe cutting it down from $8 per square feet to four feet during the short term might help them out and might help keep some money coming into the city at the same time. So I think you could use a little bit more discussion. Obviously, this wasn't exactly the best format for it, given the format here. So I would like you to take a look if that's okay. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Walt Lindelof, 437 McMillan in the city of Marquette. I am the Chair of the City of Marquette Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Just wanted to let you know on the record that I'll be here if you have any questions when we get to the discussion concerning the arabesque tent. I'll be here to answer any questions you may have from the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Bill Sfed. I live at 1605 Wright Street, and I'd like to speak to Item Number 10 on the agenda. Thank you.
I'm Rick Rhodes. I'm owner of Senor's Food Truck. I live at 990 US 41 in Scandia, Michigan, and I'm here in regards to Item 13 to field any questions you may have on the food truck owners.
Thank you. Will you state your name again?
Rick Rhodes, Richard J. Rhodes.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Frank Jeffertro, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Please set your digital timer in front where we can see it. The three lights are no longer needed. December 15, a member mentioned receiving her hospital packet at 3:16 PM for a vote that night. Just the public lacked access to the document. You left us unable to prepare as well as your own board. December 8, you blew off the Cinder Pond idea, not understanding the suggestion. You mentioned the trouble skulls have leaving the marina after you'd been asked to consider building a dock just south of the marina. Campana stressed the safety factor. The big lake is too unpredictable for skulls. For the rowers' sake, they're safer on an inland lake. December 8, Campenzi hoped to reinstate closing comment, but felt she lacked the votes. Neither Frazier nor Conley offered an opinion, and Reynolds favors public comment, so maybe there are for votes. Prior to last year, the great majority twice voted to keep closing comment. Odd there'd be such a reversal, being my comments are less severe than years ago. Why not make a motion? Let's find out who's who. Your influence allegedly stole our closing comment from us, yet December 8, you refuted this claim. No state law says there has to be two, you said. Does that make your action right? Closing comment was there and now it's gone for an illegitimate reason. That's theft. You stole it, which constitutes thievery. You also said that one speaker stops if the mayor writes something down. Untrue again. I've encouraged members to take notes. Just don't write on and on about items unrelated to the comment. Your December 8 claim that I'm negative, obnoxious, and unpleasant is hypocrisy. You've again tried to divert attention away from the specifics in those comments, as the record attests. What do you find so obnoxious about the truth? You treat people indecently. For example, is your authoritarianism over other members, your refusal to move items up for those who reserve time, your insult of Campenzi, and your threats against me in the men's room. You complain that we won't show up unless a meeting is televised, when members like you created this situation. Campana won't even try to understand his alleged conflict of interest. He said it's been pointed out two, three, four times that I have no conflict financially, legally, ethically. What's been pointed out many more times than he does, at least ethically. He said of us, "Maybe they can't hear. We hear just fine." Dave simply refuses to address the allegation that you and Nimi lured him to vote because five votes were needed to force the boathouse through. He doesn't understand the concept of influence with the manager and attorney's wives also in the club, no less. The credibility of your November 10 comment about being an equal person didn't last a month. I'd hoped for a fair start, but it's doubtful this will happen in the wake of your insulting December 8 attack.
Anyone else wishing to step forward and make a comment?
Good evening. Yur Malankin, 8 Market Drive. Golly, I guess you guys have excelled to the previous commission unwillingly. But anyway, I disagree. I think you guys are doing a fabulous job. I do, or I would like you to reconsider, if you would please, a second comment period. I've been on the Landfill Authority for many, many years, and we have two comment periods for our public. I've been on some other entities as well that have two comment periods. And the reason for the second that I would like for you to consider is, after you've deliberated on several things, it's always nice to be able to comment on it, or at least have an option to comment on the decisions that you guys have and gals have made. This way, we have no rebuttal or affirmative after the fact. So I would like for you to reconsider that, if you would. Other than that, I think the snowplow people and city people are doing a fabulous job in keeping our streets and everything else running smoothly and power companies keeping lights on even though we have big storms and what have you. So, job well done, and again, thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Malankin. Any other people wishing to speak? Okay. We'll move on to the next agenda item then, and that is the consent agenda. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Sure, support? Support. Commissioner Baldini, are there any corrections or anything that one member mentioned that there was an error in the minutes that would like to be corrected? And then Commissioner Campenzi wanted to say something. Commissioner?
No error, but just I would like, I guess, five points included in my comments under, I think it was Item Number Seven, New Business, DLP. I don't have any comments in there, but I am voting against it, so I guess I'd like the reasons why I voted against it in there.
Can you just give them to the... Did you say those things?
These are from my notes, so I just took out the bullet points.
All right. Why don't you submit that to the clerk stating that these are from your notes, rather than have that be at the official meeting, because they might not totally agree with what the recording is? So, if you could do that. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Conley, you had an issue with accuracy.
Not a big issue, but during my comments, at the end of the meeting, I gave Mr. Goodman credit for saving us hundreds of thousands of dollars, not just hundreds of dollars. And I thank him again, and I'd like the minutes to reflect the credit that the commission gave him.
Okay. Thank you. That's... Thank you. With that correction and that addition, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Mr. Nelson, you noticed the exciting uproar here. We've accepted your thing in the... your picture in the consent agenda. Again, thank you very much for the nice gift. Okay? And my apologies for having to sit there for all that time. Okay. The next is new business. That'd be Item Number 10, Lake Shore Boulevard Closure Report. We have two individuals who would like to speak. Ed, would you like to come forward?
Mayor, my name is Ed Rissack, and I live at 317 East Prospect Street. I also own a business out of 2909 Island Beach Road, which is one of the three galleries right at the entrance to the island. In mid-November, after one of the storms that had hit, I think we had two or three in a row, they closed down Lake Shore Boulevard, right between Wright Street all the way down to Holly Street. The action of that happening, immediately right after it happened, I went down to the and started talking to Kurt Goodman about the closure of the road and when it was going to reopen, informing him that it was having an effect on my business at the island. He informed me that, after talking to the commission and other people, that it was going to be closed for a substantial amount of time and that it was going to be discussed to find out when it would reopen. The decision had been made to keep it closed for an extended period of time. I had made him aware of the fact that that was happening right during my busiest part of the year, which is the Christmas season. During that Christmas season, my sales were down by 80%. The traffic on Lake Shore Boulevard coming out to the island was down probably about the same. Most of the people that were coming out there were people that are familiar with Marquette or live here in Marquette. A large portion of our business is based on tourism. A lot of the people that were driving out to the island saw the sign on Lake Shore Boulevard just past Casey Street that says that the road, Lake Shore, is closed. They would drive up to Pine Street and turn around, or go up to Wright Street and take it over to Prescott Island and turn around. They definitely were not coming out to the island. Many of them just believed that the road was closed. A lot of the people, the tourists that come to Marquette, don't know about the layout of Marquette, and they just do what most of us do when we take a ride, and that's to drive out to the island or to take a ride along the lake, and they follow it out there, go out to the island, see how beautiful it is. We're right on that path, and so that's a large majority of our business. The effects of keeping the road closed on tourism is that the road along the lake is one of the largest tourist attractions in Marquette. Everybody drives from downtown out to the island. The drop in tourism will not only... doesn't only just affect my business, but it affects every tourist-based business in Marquette. All of the hotels, restaurants, anybody that deals with tourism in any way has been affected by the fact that when people come to Marquette and they realize they can't drive all the way out to the island, it takes a big hit on the way we try to present Marquette, of being able to drive around the bay and go to the only place where you can go out in an island and be out in the middle, Lake Superior, in your car. The effects on local... our local citizens here in Marquette is that it's accessible for all the people. I just heard other people talking about how we've received all sorts of notoriety nationally about how well we treat our senior citizens. And believe me, I can't tell you how many people come into our gallery and tell us how beautiful this town is and how they want to move to Marquette because they just love the way they have that area from downtown out to the island and back, and that a lot of these people cannot get outside their cars. They can't enjoy the lake the way other people can.
Could you wrap it up? Your three minutes is way beyond.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Go.
So, my point is that the opening of the island is important, not just to tourism, but to all the citizens in Marquette. If this is kept closed for an extended period of time, as I've heard that it's possible that it could be closed for three years while the study's being done, it's going to put me out of business as well as the other two galleries that are out there. The other two galleries that were out there right after the 15th, closed after the 15th, and they have not reopened since.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, you wanted to speak? We may address you later after we have talked.
Thank you. Again, my name is Bill Sfed. I live at 1605 Wright Street. I was here at the December meeting, and I stand behind my remarks that I made the last time. Since that time, I met with some city officials. Meeting was set up by Kyle, and we looked at the Lake Shore section of the Lake Shore. I didn't see any evidence that the bike path was eroded. There were, in fact, weeds still growing out of the ground right along the pavement edge of the bike path, so I know that they haven't been disturbed. The other thing is, in case the term "attractive nuisance" comes up again, I'd like, just for the information, maybe the people listening at home, people here, attractive nuisance is a concept that deals with children, not the general public. So it would not really be applicable in this case. And actually, removing snow and... so that hazards are visible, would actually... the concept that could be used is open... oh, let me see. Open and obvious concept. You may think this is my opinion, however, my question directed to ask lawyers on NMU. That's the response that I got from one of the attorneys. The other two had nothing to add, so I assume they concurred with that opinion. I did read through the information for the agenda and the attachments, and I see you have two options. One, keep the road and multi-use path closed, and two, restore the site to a condition of safe public use, approximately $11.5 million, which is the $8.8 million for the project of doing the whole thing, multiplied by 1.3, doing it in the winter. Give me a break. That's not going to open the bike path for the winter. No... I can't imagine that you've been given those two choices, and so I encourage you to find another choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sfed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the agenda item?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. This is the Lake Shore Boulevard Closure Report background. At the December 15, 2014, regular meeting, the city commission added an agenda item to review and recommend options for restoring open access to the Lake Shore Boulevard multi-use pass through the currently closed section. pass through the currently closed section. The direction included specific interests in identifying actions and costs necessary to restore the site to a condition of safe public use, ongoing clearing and plowing, and benefit cost-based options for consideration during the first regular meeting in... first regular meeting in January. As a result of several previous city studies of the site supporting environmental remediation, shoreline erosion, and sustainability and infrastructure maintenance, staff has a well-established understanding of non-emergency-related issues for this stretch of road, which have previously been shared with the City Commission and public. Coordination with federal and state agencies and elected officials remains underway, and staff is pursuing all funding avenues to help offset the estimated $8.8 million cost required to address this issue at the site. The severe winter weather this season has harshly impacted the already highly degraded baseline condition of the road, creating widespread failures of the shore cladding, road and subsurface infrastructure, and the bike path. Debris from three winter gales was thrown onshore and remains frozen below ice resulting from substantial shoreline flooding. City staff conducted multiple inspections of the site, with the last and most concerning inspection being conducted on January 5, 2015. A summary of that inspection recommends continued closure and is attached for review. In order to restore the road to a condition for safe public use, staff recommends using the plan previously approved by the commission, as it was thoroughly vetted through a public process and has been endorsed by both the State of Michigan and a coastal engineering consulting firm, as the best design for the chosen alternative at a minimum. And in order to provide access for both residents and emergency vehicles, the original cost for restoring the shoreline roadway and multi-use pathway would be required to respond to the commission's December 5 inquiry for safe operation. Should be noted, however, that costs proposed were estimated presuming implementation during normal construction seasons. The city could anticipate substantially higher construction costs, up to 30%, should it choose to undertake the project during peak winter months, and presuming necessary vendor services and materials could be imported. Should be noted that if the city chooses to undertake this effort without support of federal or state funding, the full project cost will be borne by the city, and further such unilateral action would jeopardize and forfeit the city's qualification for future emergency funding. It should also be noted that as a result of flooding impacts of severe winter weather may have extended into the adjacent Cliff Dows property, including areas of the site hosting Michigan DEQ mandated groundwater monitoring wells. The impact of severe weather, including the potential for accelerated degradation and compromise of subsurface infrastructure, is unknown. Both weather as well as local construction activities, such as roadwork, under discussion, would have the strong potential to affect the current groundwater-surface water interface baseline and may impact ongoing environmental response activities related to the former Cliff Dows site. Fiscal effect: option one, maintain closure of the road and multi-use pathway and continue to pursue emergency funding in accordance with Section 42-37 of the City Charter, minimal budgeted maintenance of detour control signs. Option two, restore the site to a condition of safe public use, approximately $11.5 million. No funds are allocated in the current fiscal year 2014-15 budget. Section 2A of the City Charter prohibits the allocation for any improvements that have not been budgeted for. Therefore, the request would need to be programmed into upcoming... into an upcoming budget and be reconciled against other projects in the capital improvement plan per City Commission direction. Recommendation: concur with the recommendation of city staff and maintain the closure of the road and multi-use pathway, and direct staff to continue efforts to seek U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and alternative funding for a complete and sound engineered replacement, revetment, and relocation of the road and pathway in accordance with recent commission-approved plans, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Okay. What's your pleasure? Any motions? No motions? Commissioner Campani?
I'd like to suspend the rules for discussion.
Is there a support for that? Commissioner Reynolds? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Campani?
I think we were expecting to get a little bit of an update from staff on this tonight, maybe with the grant funding. I know that's one area I'd like to see. One, the timeline, how quickly that might come to fruition or how long staff thinks the road might be closed. I guess I think those are the two questions I'm getting from the community.
Who are you addressing that to? Why don't you do it to the city manager, and then he can punt to whomever he wishes?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, ma'am. Dennis, you want to read through?
Thank you. I have been in correspondence with Mr. David Gerzak, who is the outreach coordinator for USAC, United States Army Corps of Engineers, the Detroit District. The good news is, our project was accepted as a project that has federal interest. That request has been processed, and it's placed into their database, which means they've requested funds to initiate the project. Funds have not been allocated yet, and he did inform me that this has to get reviewed by their higher headquarters, which would be the regional headquarters for the upper Midwest. I believe they call it the Mississippi River Basin. Based upon that, you know, that could be a couple of... it could be up to two months before I can have an answer on when we could potentially seek that funding. We're also... that we could expect an answer on the federal funding. We are also in contact with... I know that the city manager's office has been coordinating with Mr. Fatante out of Senator Casperson's office. We've been looking at packaging some funding for relief from the previous winter damage and working... trying to work that avenue as well to seek that. Potentially, when we look at lining up some funding for this project, we have to remember that when the good news story is that we have the design that's already signed, stamped, and ready to go. Hate to use the term shovel-ready, but that's essentially where we're at with this project. So once we do have the funding, I believe we could get the engineering department to get some bids out, and you'd be looking at, you know, from bid to completion. I don't want to speak out of school, but you'd probably be looking at about 18 months with some contingencies. Very conservative contingencies, if you will, assuming things could go wrong. But I like to say that because of the unique dynamics of the Cliff Dows site. That's really kind of a known slash unknown at this time, once you start moving the road and getting into that. But again, there's a good news story with that, too. Look at the addressing both of those items at the time. But to answer the original question, I believe it's going to be at least a minimum, if not 30 days, if not 60 days, before we have an answer from USAC, and then we'd be able to project out from there.
When you say that our proposal has been accepted and funding, I guess, everything but approved, does that mean the entire project as we've proposed at that amount? Or are we expecting a percentage or...?
What happens is, the first round of funding is, I believe, up to $100,000 for study. We've completed most of that study already. And in my conversations with this coordinator from USAC, they would be willing to take the study that we've done, that's been vetted by Baird Coastal Consultants, take that into consideration and review it, as opposed to commissioning another study. So that, again, puts us ahead of the game.
Sorry. One more question. I guess, as we go through the spring and it's summertime in Marquette, one way or another, will we be looking at reopening the road and the bike path?
I guess I wouldn't be able to answer that until we get through the winter and see what the condition of the revetment in the road and all the infrastructure in that area looks like.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Campani? Commissioner Campana wanted to comment. No? No, you are.
At the last meeting, I was in favor of having staff look at opening up the bike path, only because it's a well-used path connecting the island to, you know, the rest of the city, and it's, you know, bikers, walkers use it a lot. And if I... and I always... I would, you know, I said it's up to staff, and I trust, you know, the engineers and the staff on whatever decisions they make because they are the experts. I said I would go along with what they recommend. I almost always do. And I believe the motion that we made at the last meeting was not for the road or the shoreline, but just the bike path. And what we got back here is an estimation for the shoreline, the road, and a bike path at $11.5 million, which nobody's going to vote for because we don't have $11.5 million. Even if we had $11.5 million, I don't think we would vote for it. So it was just to open up the bike path, but we didn't get a price for that or an opinion on that. I was reading further, and I did come across, and now this is going to change my mind, but I came across an email that Scott Campani sent to Kurt Goodman saying that the bike path cannot withstand a heavy machine on the bike path, which to me must mean a snow removal blower, you know, the oversized snow blower. So if that's the case, if it's in fact rotted out underneath, if the under-support is gone and it can't take the weight of a snow blower, then it can't be cleared. The other item is if by clearing it, that's saying that that part of the roadway is safe, and if that jeopardizes funding that we could possibly get from, was it the Army Corps of Engineers or whoever's going to hopefully help fund this, if it's going to jeopardize that thing, I don't think we can do anything, you know, to make it bad. So I'm, you know... My only disappointment is all we asked about was the bike path. We didn't ask about the road or the shoreline. So I'm sorry, Bill, but I can tell you the runners and walkers are still going to use it. You can go out there, and there's going to be a trail there whether you plow it or not, so... That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, let me maybe address those kind of each one. The reason why the road and the revetment are being offered in addition to the bike path was the commission asked us to return it to a safe public use. And if we can't get ambulances out there, if we can't get police vehicles out there, if we can't get fire trucks or other rescue personnel out there, to be able to respond to people who might either be on the path or otherwise operating in that area, maybe in Lake Superior if they're surfers or other kind of people in distress, then that's not going to be a condition for safe public use. And so that's something that's incorporated in the recommendation. We called it out in the agenda cover. So in spite of the fact that it's just using the bike path, to use that bike path safely and to be able to respond to any contingency, we have to be able to get emergency personnel and public safety personnel in and out of there. And per the recommendation of the city engineer, that bike path isn't in any condition to sustain that kind of use. The second issue in how we approached this was, we included a long list of things in here that represent the full project set. What we'd ideally like to see to address the commission would be to take those on in phases. So if we can't get dune swales or if we can't get other kind of things that are specific to open the area up, but that could be used to open up the area for some kind of safe public recreation, we could probably trim some of those additional projects off and plan on doing it as out phases once the original project set would be completed. So you're looking at maybe something that's at around a little bit over $8 million, about $8.8 million, to something maybe about $5.5 or $6 million. And the rest of the project could be deferred until a little bit later. What Dennis was referring to with the Army Corps, right now, the Army Corps is going in with a request. That request comes in at a certain level. This next round of funding that they're asking for with supplementals could increase that. So to the earlier question about how much money might we be able to expect and when might it be coming, that's something that's going to be subject to the president actually soon announcing in February his planned budget. We'll see what kind of emergency funding has been available, but as you heard, the program offices have already programmed that in, and it's been accepted for federal consideration. Senator Casperson's office has offered to allow us to come down and testify on the impact of this emergency weather on road funding with a potential opportunity to get some kind of state match. So our hope would be that within the next six to eight weeks, after the state budget conferences have been completed, after the federal budget deliberations have been kicked off, and we've got an early indication about what other kind of funding might be available, we'll know what kind of funding then the city would have to come up with as a match. And that will be something that we'll forward as part of the budget deliberations then for consideration under the capital improvement plan. So there might be a couple of different ways to skin the cat, but at the end of the day, to make it safe for public use, to do it within the timeframe we believe the commission's asked us to do it, it's going to be pretty expensive.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I assume, Ed, your entire business doesn't ever flow on the basis of traffic from the bike path. It's the road for you, right? Here's just an example, and I'm not an engineer, and I read all this, and I am not questioning in any way the validity of your reports. But let's use an example. If Ed's store was Walmart or Marquette General Hospital, do you think we would close the road off and say, "Well, too bad, you got to drive all the way around there"? Do you think the city wouldn't have at least a gravel temporary road to Walmart or to the hospital? Why not to Ed's? And I'd like to ask engineering, is that... would that effort be used... viewed as unilateral action this spring to put a... and people can ride on the gravel road in a bicycle, too. I drive on all kinds of terrible roads, and I... why... including some of the paved streets in Marquette. But why can't... is that, you know, not spend $8 million to put a gravel road from the barrier to the barrier? What's wrong with that solution? I'd like to hear that from somebody. Dennis?
I'm going to start. The reason we can't do that now is because any subsequent storms are going to add ice accumulation. There's no ditch line left, and when the water comes over, it's going to freeze.
Stop from it. I'm not talking about now. I'm talking about this spring. So it's open in the spring and the summer. That's what I'm talking about.
I guess we would be happy to evaluate any type of review of the conditions in the spring, once we see what it looks like.
Okay.
Honestly, I don't believe that either our city engineer or myself could answer that without knowing what the conditions look like in the spring. One thing I hate to do is tell you, yeah, we could do it now, and then we get to the spring, and we can't. We not manage our expectations.
But could you look at it in the early spring and see if you could make a temporary road that would allow people to drive on it five miles an hour to get from point X to point Y? And thus, is that possible?
If that's what the city manager would like us to do, commission through the manager, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay. The other question is, I'm getting kind of vague here on government funding. Are we... you mentioned $100,000. That we're now, you know, $7.9 million short. Do you have any idea what they're talking about? Are they talking about $1 million? $5 million? What?
I can expand on that. The first phase is $100,000. Currently, the program would offer $1 million, but there is some pending legislation that would up that amount to, I believe, $4.5 to $5 million. And so that would, you know, cover 70% of our costs on that.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Mine's not really a question, but a comment, rather. And I also... I'm sorry, Bill. I mean, I understand your grief, but I think that we have other ways that we can run around Marquette, and I think we have other places we can run. But to Ed's point, Gerzak, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, we don't have another store that's Ed Gerzak's store. I mean, he doesn't have another option. So I wish that... I don't know what I didn't beforehand, I didn't look at what our sign or our detour policy is or how we do that, but I wish there was some way that we could have another plan as far as... as sign detours, because I have driven past there and there's a little tiny sign that says "Island Store, this way". But my point is, I wish we could have something that tells them to go around, because I, you know, I know to go around because I live in the city of Marquette and I know how to do that. But that would be my offering, is somehow we could have some better signage and then what Tim Mike said, you know, in the spring, we could try to come up with something that would fix it for a temporary basis.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Fraser?
I agree with everybody else's comments here about, you know, nothing we can do here in the winter, but if staff could look at an option three during the summer, during the spring or somewhere, everything thaws out, obviously we all know that, and there's been construction, it's hard to work in the winter, but when things thaw, the road looks good, then you can maybe come up with an option three, just, you know, obviously, we all go with your judgment, you guys are the engineers, the experts, obviously, but maybe an option three, just to get the minimum, like you said, a gravel road or something, just a minimum, just to get the road up so people can get from point A to point B. And then like the other commissioner said, maybe a better detour sign to help out with your, with your shop and stuff like that, because obviously, there's nothing we can do in the winter, but, you know, in the spring would be good to find a better way for people that are from out of town that don't know which way they're going and stuff like that. So, and I think, like you said, the bikers and skiers, they're going to use the bike path no matter what. I mean, people ski around the island. There's no access to anywhere in the island from registered vehicles and that doesn't stop anybody, so I think that's all we can do.
Thank you. Commissioner Cambenzi?
Two things. I think Commissioner Reynolds hit it on the head because I think we would still keep the road closed if it were Walmart or anything else. However, I think the signage we have is insufficient for those businesses. And I'd like to look at a way that helps people understand that they can go around, you know, with the right path on there. I think it's something that, I'm not saying the city should go out and fund that, but I'm thinking that we should work with the businesses out there to come up with a way that we clearly mark that they're still open. I think that's fair. The other thing, I think the state of Michigan has a great, it's a four caricature drawing on the birth of a pothole and what happens to our roads, not even this road particularly, but what happens when they freeze and thaw and crack. And that continues over and over again in the spring. And it's pretty, pretty easy to see how quickly roads can deteriorate. And what we have here, if you look at the pictures and the community members watching out there, is we have a considerable amount of water that is thawing, freezing, thawing, and freezing. And so I, as unfortunate as it is, I think our best option right now is to stay the course and reevaluate in the spring. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Connelly?
I initially second Commissioner Campana's motion last month because I was thinking toward opening the bike path, but I'm changing my mind as I see these thoughts about jeopardizing funding. That's a compelling issue in itself. The continuing weather and damage is also compelling. So I, my feeling is to accept the report of the city staff and maintain the closure for now with the thoughts toward opening it as in whatever manner we find feasible when the ice goes away.
Any other comments? Commissioner Baldini?
I agree that there's nothing, I don't think there's anything we can do in the short term. But I do believe and I feel that the signage out there is not real great saying "detour". I noticed that when we close off downtown, we have good signage saying, you know, "Turn here, go there", so on and so forth. And I live on Pine Street, so I go down that way and it's, it doesn't really, it says it's closed, but you have to hunt for the "detour" sign. And I just think maybe the city could attempt to do a better job on that, but I don't think there's anything in the short term we're going to do to open that road.
Okay. Any further comments? Now, we've dispensed with the rules and had discussion. I think a motion would be appropriate, maybe considering the recommendations with the additional things added to it about signage and reevaluating as soon as possible in the spring to get a passable road of some kind through there. Is there a motion at all? Anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Baldini?
I would like to move that we ask or charge the city manager to evaluate this project again in the spring and to, in the short term, look at the signage and see if it can be improved to indicate flow of traffic.
Support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Closed. Motion passes unanimously. Next is item number 11, a special assessment report regarding the 1100 block of Jefferson Street.
Yes, Your Honor. Background, on October 17th, 2014, the residents along the 1100 block of Jefferson Street filed a petition for a special assessment project to upgrade the gravel street with asphalt pavement, curbing, and storm saw. The petition was presented to the commission at their regularly scheduled meeting on November 29th, 2014. The city commission directed the city manager, the city manager, have the city engineer prepare a report pursuant to Section 40-5 of the Marquette City Code. The city engineer has prepared the attached report for city commission review and discussion. City Code Section 40-2, Commission Authority reads, "The city commission shall have the power to determine by resolution with or without petition that the whole or any part of the cost of any public improvement or hazard abatement shall be defrayed by special assessment upon the property in the special districts especially benefited, but such determination shall not be made until the preliminary proceedings provided for and 40-5 shall have been completed. The city commission may schedule a public hearing per Section 40-6, Public Hearing Notice, Part A, which reads, 'Upon receipt of the city manager's report, the city commission may schedule a public hearing on the proposed improvement and the special assessment district therefore.' Fiscal effect, no funds are allocated in the FY 1415 Budget, Section 7.2A of the City Charter prohibits the allocation for any capital improvements that have not been budgeted for. Therefore, the request would need to be programmed into the upcoming budget and be reconciled against other projects in the capital improvement plan per city commission direction. Recommendation, the city commission shall determine whether or not to proceed with the special assessment, given the report and alternatives presented, alternatives as determined by the commission."
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there a motion? Commissioner Campana?
I move that the city commission shall determine whether or not to proceed with the special assessment, given the report and alternatives presented. That motion is out.
Well, it's a nice motion, but how are we going to determine? We've got to determine it some way. So, is there a second to that motion? No, okay. All right. All right. That dies for lack of a second. Any other motions? Could I, could we, is there a, go ahead, yes.
Can you ask a newbie question?
Well, sure.
There's no special assessment right now. I mean, there's no special assessment district. Does one have to move to create it? Or if there's no motion, then it dies and we move on? What do we do?
We can schedule a public hearing to discuss that, and that's what we would do. Mr., that's what we would do. Schedule a public, yeah, to discuss it. Yes, Commissioner Cambenzi?
I was just going to make a motion to suspend the rules if we were going to discuss it, but...
Is there a support to that? That's appropriate.
My second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye or yes.
Yes.
Okay. That passes. Okay. Now, further discussion? Okay. All right, Commissioner Campana?
I do have one question of Keith, and that is, when we look at our gravel roads still out there, how is it determined in engineering where to place those for replacement? Because I know we don't have too many left, but what time span are we looking for? And I guess, how do we prioritize where those are?
Let's see. Priority-wise, you know, it's been looked at over the years with the capital improvement plan, so there is a priority out there. But as far as how that priority was come up with, you have to take a look at different factors, some being the slope of the road, the amount of erosion that's going on. In some cases, you have utilities underneath the road that need to be replaced, so that might put up a higher priority. So there's different factors like that as far as prioritizing how each road is taken care of.
Can we estimate, I guess, because this isn't within our five-year window right now, correct? This street?
It's been in our five-year window for a while. I guess it just hasn't been funded. Let's put it that way.
We have an expanding contracting five-year plan for, anything else, Commissioner Cambenzi? I have a question. Do we have any indication the residents got their potential assessments? Do we have any reaction from them to, varying from outrage to "Let's do it"? So would that not be kind of a driving force to say, to have, to direct the manager to say, "We would like some input from the residents now that they know how much it's going to cost them. Are they still in favor of it"? That's really, and if they're not, then, then I'm not forcing it down their throat, because that's a lot of money, some of the folks. We have no idea if they're for, I'm disappointed they all weren't here to say yay or no. So I think that needs to be done, too. Commissioner Campana?
Keith, if you would help me on this, just so the people know, the cost of that road to put it in and to drain and sewer was like $340,000.
Roughly, yeah.
And their assessment would be $38,000, split amongst?
Well, there's some different scenarios in there. If you look at the report, you know, just based upon curb and gutter, the street paving itself, special assessment costs would come up to about $34,000. But then, you also got to look at, which would be up to the city commission, is also undersized. It's not even a water main. It's basically just a water service that services those homes through there. So that needs to be upgraded to an eight-inch water main. So, I mean, that's something that could be special assessed. That's up to the city commission. If that's special assessed, you get another $50,000 from that, but that's more cost towards property owners. So there's some different options there, different scenarios you got to look at as far as the report.
So for these people that live on that street, and there's only, what, about eight houses, six houses, eight houses, it doesn't matter, whatever it is, it's a small amount. If they want to get this road fixed, put in, what would be their next move? I mean, would they have to just come to the city and say, "We accept those charges" and then it's up to the city to put it on the plan, in the queue for, you know, "This is when we're going to build it"? So that we can make a motion to go somewhere here? How would they get the road built if they want to have that road?
From my understanding here, I mean, there's different options as far as a special assessment process. You can either assess them all of it, part of it, none of it. It depends on the city commission's, what they want to do there with that. So I guess this is a first step to see exactly what you, the city commission, want to do as far as special assessment. If you want to go through with it, then there would be another meeting after this that would go through what is actually going to be special assessed based upon what you come up with there.
Is there any further?
No.
Mr. Manager?
I think though, important also to Mayor Fortem Campana's question, this isn't in the current capital improvement plan. So per the charter, this would have to go through that regular capital improvement planning process and be included. And the recommendation from staff was that there's no, right now, there's no special priority being given to this. The commission would have to decide what priority it would be considered, along with all the other capital improvements that are going to be proposed for this year. So part of the, part of what Keith's answer is, is if this is going to take city funding, it's a capital improvement project like anything else, there's a special assessment where part of the cost can be offset by the people who are asking for it. If they don't want it to go through the city's capital improvement project and they want to pay the full cost of that project, they could elect to do that and get it potentially within the timeframe that their priority might assign to it. But there's really two parts to this. One is deciding what kind of special assessment would be associated with it, and then whether or not it gets a particular priority in the upcoming capital improvement planning process.
I have a question. Is there a way to, maybe a public hearing specifically to have a public hearing regarding the residents on the 1100 block of Jefferson to say, "Do you or do you not want to pay the special assessments"? Because if they don't want it, this falls into the line of unending roads that need fixing. And I'm not, why do it if they're saying, "Boy, that's just way too much money"? Can we do that?
Absolutely, sir. And we can do that administratively with each owner on the street.
You don't need a public hearing?
You don't need one. If the commission chose to do it that way, we could, but we can reach out to every one of the residents in the impacted area.
Would a motion then be appropriate for someone to make to do that, to direct management to discuss it with each resident? Commissioner Cambenzi?
Well, I'll go ahead and make that motion. I'd like to direct staff to meet with the residents on the 1100 block of Jefferson Street to go over not only the special assessment, but also the city's capital improvement project, to the extent that they understand where it falls on that list, even if it is, I guess, further out than five years. And I have down PESA rating, if any, but I'm not sure. That probably can get determined in the city capital improvement project, but I think I agree. If you could, if you could do that and report back, I guess that's what my motion I'd like it to be.
Is there support to the motion? Okay, Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Cambenzi? None. Commissioner Reynolds?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Baldini?
Question. Did I hear you say, Sarah, didn't I hear you say, "To determine the interest of those residents in paying for it"?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Connelly?
May I clarify the motion? The motion, as I heard it, was to meet with the residents. Could we reach out by letter or phone call personally in the same manner?
We can, we can reach out in any manner that the commission sees fit. Typically, we've used all kinds. We've done walkthrough. We've tried to coordinate meeting times when it's convenient for people. We've sent them letters.
Is the motion specifically for a meeting?
I guess a meeting in whatever preferable to the residents. I'd like to leave it kind of in their hands.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Closed. Okay. That motion passes. The next item is the Aberesque tent item. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. Background, the Aberesque tent was purchased in August of 2008 with the intent of providing public performance venue available to all special events utilizing city-owned parks. City staff marketed the asset to all special event groups when renting the city, a city-owned park. Many of the events declined due to the cost associated with erecting, ongoing maintenance, and dismantling the structure. Staff estimates the cost is approximately $6,000 per rental. This figure was based upon 2013 city staff equipment and labor rates. A private contractor is also an option, but the results, but results in similar costs. During the summer of 2013, the tent was erected in Matson Park for a lengthy period of time in an effort to reduce costs and encourage use. The result was relatively little interest from event coordinators, increased park vagrancy, damage to the tent, significant staff time addressing ongoing maintenance, and negative response from neighboring residents. The Arts and Culture Advisory Committee discussed the future of the Aberesque The Arts and Culture Advisory Committee discussed the future of the Aribesque tent at their December 3, 2014, and made the following motion. The motion was made by Walt Lindler and passed unanimously based upon information presented to the committee, including managerial maintenance, liability, expenses, and use data. The Arts and Culture Advisory Committee supports the discontinuation of the market city's Aribesque tent and recommend its immediate sale. We recommend the revenue generated from the sale be held in an account to be used for arts and culture programming pending the development of a workable solution for a public performance venue. Staff particularly, or partially concurs with the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, does not recommend directing funds toward a set-aside account. Rather, any revenue from the sale be deposited in the tourist park fund and used as a future grant match for park improvements identified in the land use action plan for tourist park fiscal effect. All proceeds from the sale of the Aribesque tent will be deposited into the tourist park fund. The estimated market value by the manufacturer is $25,000 to $28,000. Recommendation, declare the Aribesque tent as surplus equipment and place on the city's auction site for competitive bids and alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commission, Walt Lindler made himself available for questions or things during the comment. Is there a motion regarding this item? Mr. Kampana?
I guess I'd like to vote that we suspend the rules. I'm to have a discussion.
Is there a support? Okay. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We probably ought to change the rules and just do that first, but that is the rule. So any comments? Commissioner Kampana?
I guess two comments. I'm not surprised this is on here, but whether it's to Walter's staff, I guess, one question I have, this was a grant fund, funded project from the state. Do we have any responsibility, I guess, for that match? Once it's purchased, it's purchased?
Who are you asking?
Yeah, we've, we've looked into the grant. It was a Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs grant, capital improvement purchase. And so we don't have any conditions that the grant has on that purchase at this point. So we're free to do with it what we may.
Okay. And then the last one, just the discrepancy, I guess, of where the funding from the sale would be deposited, and staff recommends a tourist park fund. Is that because that's where the match was taken out of at the time?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay, I guess I would like to say that I, I support putting that money back in that, I know it was controversial at the time, but I do think that it's appropriate. Thank you.
You're supporting the staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further, Commissioner Connolly?
A question to the city manager and then on to the staff, if you will. It's going in the tourist park fund. Is Matson Park covered by the tourist park fund as well?
No, sir. Tourist Park is for tourist park. We have a different fund for Matson, different fund for the Cinder Pond.
And the reason for my question is the Aribesque tent seemed to be used more often in Matson Park than it did in tourist park. Is that right?
Yes.
And I know that there are some problems at Matson Park, particularly the caving. There's going to be, have to be some improvements made on the bike path and in the park at some point. Do we have those needs covered as well?
Let me, let me take a stab at that and then turn it over to Carl, maybe, to either keep me straight or add more data. But the tourist park plan, the commission approved that during 2013. It lays out a whole series of improvements for the park that include things like converting the former baseball field ultimately into an area that's going to be a performance venue, supporting organizations like the Hiawatha Festival and, and other users there. And we don't have a similar kind of a plan in place yet for Matson Park. There's actually been a fair amount, given the waterfront planning and the public engagement in different elements of activities going on in the park, a fair disparity of views about what additional improvements might be required down there to support the kind of activities that we currently have underway. So when you ask many of the events, why they choose tourist park, or why they choose Matson Park, or why they choose the Band Shell at Presque Isle, for some of the events, they're looking for that direct link with the downtown. So the kind of, the kind of venue that they'd like to provide would be, "Let's finish up the event and then everybody walk down and get something to eat, or enjoy one of the nightclubs and maybe go out and do something afterwards." That would be very difficult for them to do if they were going to hold the event at Presque Isle, because it's so remote and there's no other immediate access other than by car from that facility in. And the people who generally prefer to go to tourist park like to have self-contained events. They like to be able to, to potentially provide people with the opportunity to locate their, camp there, stay on site, and recreate in other ways when they're not participating in some other kind of a festival. And so what kind of infrastructure you need, whether it's going to be mobile and it can be deployed in a multiple, multiple different facilities, or if it's going to be firm fixed infrastructure that, that is a permanent addition to the facility, is something that for everywhere but tourist parks still kind of remains up in the air. And we reach out routinely and ask folks what their preferences are. Many of the organizations that use Matson Park bring their own infrastructure. So you'll see their own kind of raised platforms and staging and caravans that kind of create these artist areas and backstage areas, and then control for the front stage area. So it's, it's such a diverse set of requirements and different tastes and different interests in how they choose the park, that I believe, looking at the record, that the folks who are advocating for buying the Aribesque tent thought that would be an ideal solution because it could be deployed anywhere. But that hasn't borne itself out, either with the way that the groups choose to use it, or the cost of actually having to maintain it. But if I, if I haven't stated that correctly, I'd ask Carl to correct me.
Do I still have? Do I still have? Okay, so my question wasn't about selling the tent. I'm, I'm down with that. But my question is where the money goes. It was something that was intended for mainly for Matson Park, but we're putting money into the tourist park.
No, it was, it definitely wasn't for Matson Park, sir. In fact, the matching funds that were used with the state grant were taken from the tourist park fund to buy it. So, so, so the funds came from the tourist park fund and a state grant. And what we're proposing is to put the funds back in where we'd gotten them from.
Thank you. That answered my question.
Mr. Baldini? Our Chair of the Arts Culture, Walt Lindler is here. Maybe he wants to provide his rationale as to why they made the recommendation they made.
Would you like to do that, Walt, or not?
I suppose I could, real quickly, real briefly. I know we're...
No, we're here for the duration, so don't worry about that. State your name and place of residence, please.
My name is Walt Lindler. I live at 437 McMillan in the city of Marquette. I am the Chair of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for the city of Marquette. At our December meeting, as was outlined in the notes from the city clerk, we were presented information from the city staff about the potential decommissioning and sale of the tent, the Aribesque tent. We have discussed the Aribesque tent as a committee and have been individually involved with its potential usages in some of our groups, including myself, with, with the Blues Society and some other events that I've been involved with in Matson Lower Harbor Park. We looked at information that had been presented to us in a fairly, fairly informal way, but it's been an issue that's been out there for a while. This tent had a very good intention and a very good spirit, but it never really caught on with the, the groups to use it. There were too many unknown factors about it when there were questions at one time, previous city staff, folks that aren't even around anymore. But there were questions that weren't always answered clearly, including the amount of rental, how many city staff or people were needed to put it up, take it down, and that made it somewhat unpalatable for some of the groups to utilize. I think that had something to do with it not then becoming a popular, popular choice to use. Then after we looked at it from the standpoint as the advisory committee with the expense related to storage, staffing for setup and tear-down, the potential for liability and damage if it was left up at longer periods of time in the park, plus some of the voices of complaints from residents near Matson Park about it if it was up for a long period of time, we felt that it would be in the best interest of the city to decommission the tent, sell it, and try to get the revenue back. As we voiced in our recommendation, we would like to see it go for arts and culture programming. Of course, that's because we're standing up for our particularly vested interest in this, but it does sound like what the city is recommending in terms of putting that money back is a reasonable development as well, because I would tend to say that tourist park, if there are more improvements made to it, will also be an increased use venue for outdoor events that we would like to sustain in the city as the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Any further questions, Tom, that you have to ask?
No, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. You may be back, so. Mr. Reynolds?
I just have one quick question, and then I'm going to do the motion. Carl, could you just indicate to me how much we took out of the tourist park fund, just because I didn't see it, and then put towards us for the grant, grant match?
Sure. It was $22,600.
Okay. I move that, I move that we declare the Aribesque tent as surplus equipment and place it on the city, city's auction site for competitive bids, and that any monies be put into the tourist park fund.
Is there a support? Commissioner Kampana?
Support.
Any further discussion? Oh, sorry. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. The next item is the food truck ordinance. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background. In 2013, the state of Michigan, MEDC, initiated a program promoting the startup and proliferation of food trucks and other mobile cuisine services. Since that time, the city of Marquette has witnessed the startup of several such businesses and must now consider appropriate control and regulation within the local economy. City staff has been working with business owners, stakeholders, and stakeholders such as the DDA and other jurisdictions to identify best practices and alternatives. Work remains ongoing, and sustained support from all parties is required for successful conclusion and implementation. Fiscal effect known by this action. Any future ordinance may require additional license fees or arrangements, which will be included in any subsequent recommendation. Recommendation, direct the city manager to work with the DDA to develop and recommend a food truck ordinance to be presented to the city commission during their March 9, 2015 regular meeting. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Is there a motion to that effect? Saw Commissioner Baldini's hand go up first.
I move that we direct the city manager to work with the DDA to develop and recommend a food truck ordinance to be presented back to the city commission during our March 9, 2015 regular meeting.
Is there, Commissioner Connolly, support? Okay. Discussion, Commissioner Baldini?
Just that, this has been an issue, it came up during the candidate forum last summer for the city commission, and it's been an issue that's been out there. And I think we, we said, "Let's look and find out what other places are doing and come up with some recommendations."
Thank you. Before we go further, I apologize, Mr. Rhodes, I forgot to call on you. Would you like to come up and make a statement? Or are you here for...
In particular, I was here to field any questions that you gentlemen...
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. I forgot you. Okay, Commissioner Connolly?
Just that, it's a, it's a high-grade problem to have, to have food trucks that are here. They haven't been here for many, many, many years, since I've been here. It's just a recent kind of thing, and I'm, I'm glad to have food trucks that we need to look at and work with.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Kampana?
I, I attended a meeting with Mayor Coyne and Mike Walker last week, and we discussed this, and we kind of discussed the pros and cons going on about it. And I think one of the things that we thought would be a good start, if the DDA was willing to look at it, is to look at starting with operational hours after hours that the bricks and mortars are closed. And I think we'll start there so that there is no competition with the brick and mortars. Food trucks do pay fees for their permits, so they don't know if they're getting a free ride. I know there's a lot of misconceptions, but I think to make both work, what we're, what I would like to see happen first is, is what happens after the bricks and mortar restaurants close down? And the only option for people is really to get in their cars and drive out to the fast-food restaurants. So I think in looking at this, that's where I would like to see it go in supporting it. And I look forward to what the DDA has, has to say coming back.
Thank you. A clarification. The hours were just related to the DDA, not throughout the whole city. That, it was the DDA hours that was what we were trying to negotiate. Mr. Manager, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. No, I, I attended the same meeting. We've been looking at this now for the better part of a year with the DDA, and also looking at the lessons learned from the other communities that are trying to take on the same consequences of success as Commissioner Connolly mentioned. Kind of way to describe it is, you know, we, we didn't build the FAA and then invent airplanes. First, the airplanes had to come along, and then they figured out how to regulate them. So it's a, it's a good problem to have. I think Commissioner Kampana nailed it. It needs to be done in a way where it balances the best outcome for as many different parts of our community as possible, and it's fair and equitable. And we had a DDA meeting just last week, and was kind of floating the idea that the commission was interested in seeing some movement on this by the spring, and I only received positive support for that. So I think we've now had the benefit of some time to look at the issue. Our stars seem to be aligning between the DDA and other parts of the community. I'm very hopeful we'll have something to bring back in March, according to the recommendation.
Any other people wanting? Did you want to...
I, I was just going to say, mention that this is one of those good news things. I suspect we're probably, I think, there are not many cities discussing what are we going to do with the business with trucks around town. And I think it says something. I know other people are concerned about it, but it also says something about what's also happening in the community, some vibrancy.
Mr. Reynolds?
My only comments are is that I'm excited this is on the agenda, and I echo Sarah with her comments, and I'm glad that you had the opportunity to sit down with them to get this done, because I'm happy to see it on there.
Just a comment from me to, as I mentioned to Mr. Walker, we're positive about this, and we want to work out an agreement so you're happy, the businesses are happy, and this is a real plus for the city and for, for everybody. So thanks for bringing it up again, and hopefully we'll have an answer soon. Okay. Okay, and thank you, Mr. Rhodes, for coming. Okay, now, we need, I got to figure out, the motion was made, right? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
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 Okay, that motion passes unanimously. The next is an agenda item regarding the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority License and User Agreement. Mr. Clerk, could you read the agenda item, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. The city commission voted on February 10, 2014, to enter into a license and user agreement with the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority, MCSWMA, to facilitate the establishment of an authority recycling material facility at the Old Flank Farm site. On November 6, 2014, the city commission met with the MCSWMA to review project status and appoint, and appointed a subcommittee to evaluate the MCSWMA request for a project extension. It is recommended that the city commission exercise Section 4 termination provision of the lease and user agreement and to provide the MCSWMA with a 30-days notice, a written notice, excuse me. Fiscal effect known by this action. Recommendation, authorize the mayor to sign the attached letter and direct the city manager to send the correspondence. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Prior to voting, I would like to ask Commissioner Reynolds to give a report from the subcommittee that was trying to deal with this problem after our last meeting, joint meeting with the Solid Waste Authority. Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes. So we all met, this was a subcommittee of Mike Coyne, Dave Kampana, and myself. It was formed at, on November 6, then we met on November 7 to discuss the extension that the Solid Waste Authority wanted to have a license... waste authority wanted to have a license, an extension of their license to build. At that time, per, as you can see in our agenda, if you have the agenda, we've sent numerous letters back and forth between the solid waste authority and Chairman Randy Yell. And in those letters, essentially, we were asking for six things from the Marquette County Solid Waste Authority. These were: a copy of their business plan, a project estimate, as the project was originally to cost $400,000, and it was indicated by a person on the board that it could cost up to 1.1 million to construct. We asked them to provide us with a budget, cost expended so far, a copy of the environmental assessment, a baseline assessment. We asked them to further provide us with a per-ton facility fee, which was due to us on July 1, 2014. We lastly asked them to provide us with payment for the materials that we have already been recycling, and that once we receive these items, we would be willing to meet with the Marquette County Solid Waste Authority. Afterwards, we received a letter from Chairman Yell saying that he believes that these requests were counterproductive and wanted to meet. And then six letters went back and forth, essentially, well, we have more than six, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight letters went back and forth stating that Chairman Yell wanted to meet prior to, and would not provide these documents to us. And as a committee, we felt we needed these things to bring to the full commission and bring a valid recommendation to you guys. And so our recommendation is, since it's past the January 1 deadline, there's no building, there's nothing to be built. We believe that the license agreement should be terminated with 30 days' notice.
Would you make a motion to that effect?
And I would move that I authorize the mayor to sign the attached letter and direct the city manager to send this correspondence.
Is there a support to that? Commissioner Campana?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Reynolds?
No, I kind of summed it up. I mean, if anybody has any particular questions, I mean, me, I mean, the city manager, all of us could probably further specify that. This is a two-page thing that I wrote out. I just didn't want to have to let you all sit through that.
Okay. Commissioner Campana?
Just say that, you know, it has to be done. I'm sorry to see it come to this, but, you know, I'm sure the city still wants to recycle, and I hope we can continue to do that. Thank you.
Any other comments? I have one comment. I feel for the solid waste authority. They've had a very difficult time. They've had to recently fire their director for five different reasons, and it's been very difficult for them. I think they were finding it difficult to provide the information that the subcommittee asked to serve as the basis for a discussion, probably much related to the problems they were having with their director. So I don't, it's just very hard, a tough position for them to be in. So I'm gonna support the motion. Yes, Commissioner Kemenzie?
I guess I have a few questions on this. Legally, there has been work done, and I guess investments made by the solid waste authority. Could we see any legal action by approving this?
It's hard to speculate about what might happen. I mean, the contract is clear. We have the right to terminate if it's not up and ready and completed by January 1. You know, what another party chooses to do or not do, that'd be pure speculation. I don't think I'd want to sit here even discuss it, really.
Commissioner, what the manager wanted additional answer?
Thank you. I only wanted to add that in that eventuality, specifically, they have to remove all of the improvements that they've made at their expense and restore the site to what its former condition was. And that's, Kyle, I believe that's 14, paragraph 14?
No, it's paragraph 12 of the agreement. The authority shall at its own expense and for its own sole benefit, remove any such facilities in the event of termination.
Commissioner Kemenzie?
I guess I get the feeling from the correspondence, and maybe one of the subcommittees could expand on it, but that they're hoping that we will hold off until the spring of 2015. I guess I'd like to hear the subcommittees maybe reasoning on why that's not being presented to us.
Commissioner Reynolds, you want?
I'll give my opinion, but not as the subcommittee, because, but I think that all of us, even when we were sitting down in these subcommittee meetings, we also were open to doing this in the future. But right now, we don't have any plans for how they're even gonna pay for it, and per-tonnage fee, and we're actually gonna be paying for this. So I think all of us are still interested in recycling, and if they came back with some kind of plan that was more concrete and actually providing us with real numbers, that we would be, all of us were up to doing it. But we just, as of now, there's no way that it's financially or fiscally responsible.
Commissioner Campana, did you wish to add anything?
I think she pretty well covered it, but I think the big holding block was that they never provided us with those six questions, the answers to the questions. And we tried to figure out the cost of doing business there, and there's no way that the city could make money out of this. It would actually cost us money to recycle there. So there's no point in going forward until, you know, we can get a better business plan. So that's kind of why we do not want to proceed with this.
Commissioner Kemenzie?
Well, I guess I'm leery to just pull the contract out, you know, with the clauses in that they have to come in and remove everything. It's gonna be the same in the spring. I guess I'd like to give them the benefit of the doubt, considering the meetings they've gone through this past few months with their previous director. I would like to continue a positive working relationship with them and seeing if we can reach different ground in a few months. And for that reason, I don't want to vote for it. Not that I don't agree that eventually it shouldn't be terminated, but I guess at this point, I'd like to see us continue negotiations with them. Thank you.
Commissioner Connolly?
It's simple to me. A deal is a deal. Both parties agreed to it, and we are proposing to follow a course of action that is laid out in that deal. If we send this letter, we might consider future cooperative agreements. They'd have to be a lot more specific than that was, that occurred as a result of this contract. But I agree with authorizing the mayor to sign the attached letter.
Any other comments? Commissioner Baldini?
I also agree with the motion from the standpoint that I don't oppose what it was done. I think we, hopefully, we will get back into some negotiations for some recycling plant. But as it stands right now, they have not fulfilled their side of the contract. And I think we stand the potential, if we don't do something now, of having some greater expenditures without some closure of this whole project. I think it's best to say, we terminate it, let's start over at some point. I'm gonna vote for it.
Any other comments? Commissioner Frazier?
Yeah, I guess the Tom's point, that was my question, too, is, I guess, to support Sarah, if we waited till the spring to see what happens with negotiation, whether if it's gonna cost the city any more money, whatever, or if we just terminate it now, and then nothing happens till the spring anyway, because it's winter, obviously, I guess to look at both ways. I'm in favor of whatever staff feels to do with this situation. Sarah, I've spent a lot of time on these committees, and she knows what's best, but I guess, that may be the only question Tom can answer, is like, wait until spring, what's the harm? But I guess if contract, contract, then, you know, we should go forth with what we have to decide, so.
Okay. Any other comments? I'm gonna call the question, and all those in favor of the motion authorizing me to sign the attached letter and direct the manager to send the correspondence. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, that passes five to two. Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item would be, that's not on there, that would be, Sarah Reynolds asked to place an agenda item on regarding attorney review of the FOIA documents. Would you like to make a motion, Commissioner Reynolds?
I would. I'd like to move that we direct the city attorney and the city clerk to review the FOIA information of Michael Nyger.
Is there a support to that motion? Commissioner Campana? Okay. Commissioner Reynolds, your comments?
Yeah. Well, this is my reasoning. Mr. Nyger FOIA'd about 1,200 pages of documents regarding the UPCRC and the boathouse. These documents were given to Mr. Nyger per his request, and as city commissioners, we have that opportunity to review it. After having an opportunity to review the documents, and then after seeing the social media that Mr. Nyger has placed upon the city commission and city staff, and requesting that the city clerk and the city attorney, because the clerk is now an expert in this set of documents, review these documents in the effort to, one, protect the commission, two, determine if the violations he's stating is three. And I think as a commission, we should be open and forthcoming, and we shouldn't be so much concerned about these issues. And that's why I'm, after reading all the things that have been placed out there. And lastly, over the weekend, I was contacted by three different media sources that will be doing a story on this, I imagine. And I think that there's gonna be media and press about this particular FOIA document, so I think that it's important that we're having our city attorney review it for that purpose.
Thank you. Commissioner Campana, any comments?
I would like to do this, because I think, I feel that this group that Mr. Nyger represents is a group that tends to stretch the truth a little bit. And what they're looking for in these 1,200 pages is some sort of information that they can use to discredit this commission, and they want to use it against us in whatever way. So I think it's important for us to protect ourselves, that we look at it and see what we can find. And not that we're gonna go after them, but we have to be prepared for what they're gonna come at us with. So thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Kemenzie?
Two things. I guess I, one, I asked the city attorney, we have a pretty clear policy with the public schools about public documentation. I would like, I guess, an answer back on that in terms of keeping the leading, what are our responsibilities to state statute with emails, documents? You don't have to do that right now. But the other thing, too, I guess, I mean, I agree, I think it's important for everyone to know what our rights are, to make sure that we're protected. But I know with the public schools, a lot of people are not happy with school board members, and I feel like a lot of people haven't been happy with administration. And I've been one of them out there where people do say and do lots of things. And I guess what I have been told is that you can't tell someone what they can or cannot say. Slander, I think you're getting into a different thing. But I think if people are gonna go out there and say stuff, a lot of times, unfortunately, how they say it could be said better. But I do feel like people do have a lot of protection to kind of say what they disagree with. So I guess I'd just like to put that out there. I'm gonna vote for this. I do think it's important, and I think it's just one more way that all of us can educate ourselves on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? No. All right, that concludes our agenda, I believe. And we move on now to Commissioner comments. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Kemenzie.
I guess three things. I'd just like to thank Paul Nelson for the photo. That's wonderful. I guess he's gone. He's not with us anymore. But also, just to add on to that, Commissioner Baldini, who's up here with us, really did a lot of work taking this over. And Yorma, who's out in the audience, him and his crew passed on the torch, and that's the reason why we have that picture, and that's the reason why all of us can enjoy the fireworks. So I'd like to thank those three for all they've done, including their committees. The United Way, that's a really tough one. You know, I know I struggle with this in terms of coming up with the actual cost of what things cost. But I really do think tonight, with this instance, you know, we could have $12,000 less in our revenue for Lakeview. So it's one of those things that, do we have empty space? Is there someone else that's gonna come along? This is a really tough one, and I can only say that it might still be worth our efforts to have something instead of nothing with that. Lastly, I'd like to thank Steve Laurie for his presentation on the Planning Commission. Again, I'd just like to put out there, if you are interested in serving, he brought up a great point. The Planning Commission is supposed to be made up of nine members with various backgrounds, not limiting people to being an engineer or anything. So if you're interested, I would say, all those people that come before us with the complete streets and the bikes, please come forward. It's really rewarding, even though it's a lot of work. And also that I would like to look at some sort of reimbursement, pay per meeting, something for those commissioners coming up. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
I just say, I hope everybody had good holidays, good holiday break for everybody. Seeing that tent go up and down many times, living nearby, I think I know a few city employees that'd be more than happy when that thing gets sold to help load it on the truck. So I don't think any of the city employees would be crying too much. I'm sure they'd be getting in line to help that thing get loaded on the truck. So I hope, as long as the other arts and culture done their homework, I think everybody else got their, figured out what they can use for a tent, then good for that thing to go back into the tourist park fund, so.
Commissioner Campana?
I would hope that we can help Mr. Resack get that road open so that his business can hopefully continue to thrive. It's only fair that he not be limited like he is. Second item, I'd like to thank Mr. Nelson again, also for the picture. It's very generous of him, and we will appreciate it. Lastly, and I hate to bring this up again, conflict of interest. It was, this is gonna be my sixth time stating it, but you know, we do live in a city and a country where we have rules, regulations, and laws. The law says that I do not have a conflict of interest. Now, if you want to break the law and say I do, well, then, fine, but the law says there's no conflict of interest. I cannot help it if my wife wants to roll. She likes to do a lot of things, you know, and I just have no control over that. So I'm sorry, but there's no conflict. I hope I don't have to repeat it again. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yeah, I was gonna tease you, that you can't tell your wife what to do. Gosh. So that's just a couple of things. First, again, very excited about the food truck, real pumped. Second, United Way, it's one of those situations that I don't think that there's the right answer. We need the money, but we don't want to be turning down nonprofits to be staying somewhere. We want to cut them breaks, but at the same time, our budget doesn't allow for that. Thirdly, it seems as if every week, I have some kind of issue, and I need the Marquette City Police Department to help me out. And it is every week, as for the last month. And they are the most fabulous, wonderful people that answer the phone and deal with me, and deal with my dog, or deal with somebody hitting my mailbox, or see someone stealing my car. And I just wanted to thank them for being so wonderful to me all the time. And they are, I imagine they're wonderful to everybody else, because I only say my name is Sarah, and they don't know I'm Sarah Reynolds. Well, maybe they have my number memorized at this point. But I'm very thankful for them. Lastly, I just wanted to give my condolences to Manna, that her husband passed away over the weekend, and that, I'm very sorry to hear that. Manna, my thoughts are with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also want to thank Mr. Nelson. That is a spectacular picture for partial fireworks. And, God, it's a great one, isn't it? But, no, thank you. It's good to be there. As you know, I'm gonna take a moment, about six months from now is the 4th of July. We are fundraising again. We do have money for this year, because we did have a good cushion from last year, even if we didn't get the refund. And we're outdoing that again, so let's hope that this year, we have as great a weather and as huge a crowd, and the fireworks do go off. But, like, a couple of other comments. I'm glad to see we're facing, we're dealing with the truck issue. We're also, hopefully, dealing with the detour around the road. The road's gonna become a problematic issue. The lake is up, and it's not frozen over, and we have great potential to have even more storms this winter and next spring. So I think it's something, hopefully, we can face and deal with, and get a long-term solution to it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly?
I've had a good week this last week as a commissioner. I was able to count some of our blessings that we have as we live here in this community. Had a chance to take a tour of the Shyrus team plant, along with Commissioner Frazier and Baldini, and meet with the staff and the management. They are a... They are a, they're looking out in the future for energy needs, they are enthusiastic, knowledgeable, and what a great team, and what a great facility we have there. And I didn't know much about it, I still don't know much about how you make energy, except I can turn on my lights, but I know that they're looking out for us, and it was really a great thing. And I learned that they do kick in millions of dollars of payment and little taxes. That's good. We had a strategic planning session last week, where the City Commission took a reassessment and looked again, long-term, down the road, if we can, if we could do this, and I think it's great to have, not only a day-to-day operation, collecting the trash, providing police and fire, public safety, things like that, but also to look down the road at economic development, so that the younger generation continues to have a community to live in and come back to and raise their families in. We need to keep that going, so that we can continue to enjoy Marquette as a place to live. Thursday, we had a town hall meeting, in part, in, as long, along that process of strategic planning, moving the Public Service Center. It was an open forum. Not a lot of the public attended, I'd encourage the public to, to attend the next one, I think there's going to be two more. It's a great process, and I want to thank Kurt Goodman for the excellent presentation. He sells himself short as a public speaker. You did, you did a down-to-earth, really easily understandable presentation, and I was amazed at the different factors that you took into account in, in looking at all the different sites. I think you really did look outside the box, and looked at all the factors, plus and minus for each of them. So I thank you for that work and that presentation. And, last note, I went into a local business that had experience to break in, and was told, I don't think that the owner really knew I was a commissioner, and just sung the praises of the Marquette Police Department, how fast that response was. Within a minute or two, somebody was right there. It was just amazing. So, I want to thank the, the great effort of the police department. So, lots of thanks to go around today.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. Just, I want to thank both you and Commissioner Reynolds for your positive comments about the police department. You know, as you know, everyone knows, the police have been taking some pretty hard shots recently, and it's a pleasure to have the support from the governing body of the city for our police department, and you do, indeed, do a really good job. So, thank you, and we appreciate it. And even though we're a couple of days late for Cop Appreciation Day, can we send you a belated thank you and congratulations? All right, good. I have one other thing, and I'm going to speak on behalf of a woman named Gail Brandley. Gail is the organ donation liaison nurse at UP Health Systems Marquette. And she has started a crowdfunding page, and I say crowdfunding very arrogantly, because three months ago, I had no idea what crowdfunding even meant, and I went to a meeting, and it's a super idea. And they hope to raise $5,000 to purchase a substantial and visible gravestone for Sanaz Naza, Nazami. She was a young woman, a student at Michigan Tech, a PhD candidate, and was assaulted by her husband and killed. And the unfortunate problems for her family is she is from Iran, and they are very, very far away and isolated from us. Her lungs, heart, liver, pancreas, kidney, and intestines were all donated to over six people who are now alive because of her donation. I can't, and I'm sure you would have a hard time imagining how difficult this event has been for this woman's family, living so far away. And Gail Brandley is one of about six or seven employees of Marquette General, or now UP Marquette, UP Health Systems Marquette, who really took it upon themselves to be compassionate human beings, connected with the family in Iran, and have stayed in contact with them. And what prompted me to bring this up tonight was, we, the city, received a letter from this woman's sister. And in it, she describes the people here in Marquette who are so helpful to her as angels. And I talked to a friend who is from Iran, and he said, "That is probably one of the highest compliments you can give another human being." She went on to say, and I, I'll read this, what she said, and this is a person from Iran, "That race and nationality are not important, and that we have much in common as human beings, and that we serve and belong to the same God." She is Muslim. She concluded her note by sending prayers to all the recipients of her sister's organs for long life, and thanked God for those in Marquette who have shown so much love and kindness to me and my family. It's because of this letter that I'm mentioning this at a public, at a public comment session for the commission. And if you wish to contribute to purchasing a fitting grave site, because many of the recipients, interestingly, have come back to Marquette to pay respects to this woman, and they can't find a grave, which is sad. And the plan for this group is to purchase a gravestone in the shape of an angel. And to contribute, you have to go to a thing called www.crowdrise.com, and then there's a whole big, long thing, and it's, it's impossible for me to say it, but if you just go to, I tried this yesterday, you just go to www.crowdrise.com, and then write "A gravestone for Sanaz," S-A-N-A-Z, and it will come up. And if you wish to donate, you can. And I think this really, I mention this because of the way that seven or eight citizens who work here have shown what a great community this is, what, and they represent us, and also the effect it has had on a culture that is not often kind to America, but this is a real act of love and kindness that I think is, is really very unique. So, thank you for listening, and I would hope that, I made a contribution last evening, and I hope you would consider doing that also. And when you see or run into Gail, to thank her and all the other nurses and chaplains who were so, and physicians who were very helpful to this family. I have nothing further. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to join the commission in expressing our condolences to the Lang family. We know they've, they're facing their grief this week, and our, our best hopes and wishes are with them. I want to thank everybody who saw my, my family's announcement in names and places on Sunday. Thank you, and I have enough copies of the clipping, so, but thank you for your, thank you for your thoughts and your goodwill. Also, I'd like to let everybody know, we have community office hours this week, Wednesday, from 10 to 12, in the Peter White Public Library Conference Room on the first floor. And as usual, we'd love to have people come down and share their views on things they think are working, maybe things that aren't working so well, and their thoughts on how we can make Marquette a better place. And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. A meeting adjourned.